Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson is absent, Melton.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and I'll provide the opening remarks.
United States of America, it is very important for rich citizens, our nation, our people, and the miserable, the deserving justice of our all.
I'd just say a few things. First is congratulations to Tennessee for winning the College World Series last night. Really exciting game, and it's always fun to have a first-time winner like we did this year. Thanks to everyone who helped put on another great College World Series and all the exposure it provided to Omaha throughout the country and the world. Secondly, I would just note the extreme weather we're having. Make sure you're taking care of yourself in this heat, and any neighbors who may need assistance, staying cool and staying hydrated for sure. And council members did have a briefing this morning on the Missouri River and concern about that flooding stage that'll crest, we believe, Thursday, early Thursday morning. So we're keeping a close eye on that and certainly guarding city facilities and our wastewater facilities in particular in South Omaha and Plattsmouth. But be aware that some city facilities are closed, some of our trails and NP Dodge Park, for example, who is, that is flooding as we speak. And please be mindful of your own public safety and stay away from those areas while they're closed. And the last thing is, this was our last meeting before the Fourth of July, so I just wanted to make sure and wish everybody a happy Fourth of July.
In affidavit, publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder in the East 12 legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on our many items. I'd encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least to vibrate. I also want to note, if you have difficulty hearing today, we do have closed caption screens in the back, and we also have hearing aids available at the front desk here if needed. Today, we do have a proclamation to start our meeting that'll be read by Councilman Harding.
President. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Omaha, Nebraska, and whereas Park and Recreation is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to the childhood development, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas endure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Recreation and Parks Month, and whereas the City of Omaha recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates the month of July 2024 as Recreation and Parks Month, and witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city to be affixed on this 25th day of June 2024. So I will ask our Parks Director, Matt Kalsovich, or, oh, there you are. Last I looked, you were up there.
Heidi.
It's amazing, you're everywhere. To say a couple words, and Matt, Matt's the Director of the Department and does great work with, with all your staff and especially in tough times and conditions, as Council Member, or Council President Festerston pointed out, in these extreme weather conditions that we're experiencing today. So thank you on behalf of the Council to you and your staff.
Thank you very much. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. President, members of the City Council, Council Member Harding, our Parks and Recreation Committee Chair, thank you for the recognition of Parks and Rec Month. For nearly 40 years, the National Recreation and Park Association has celebrated Park and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of Parks and Recreation. This month is dedicated to recognizing and celebrating the more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our country's local, state, and community parks. This year's national theme is "Where You Belong." That celebrates the many ways Parks and Recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe and accessible places to build meaningful connections. The Park and Recreation Month lets unite, the Park and Recreation Month lets unite and uplift the many reasons why local Parks and Recreation truly embodies the essence of belonging. Together, we can demonstrate why these spaces are where you belong. In Omaha, with 256 parks, 13 outdoor pools, 12 community centers, 10 spray grounds, eight golf courses, four youth camps, three indoor pools, multiple sports, specific facilities, and much more, we truly believe we have something for everyone. On behalf of the over 160 full-time employees and the almost 400 part-time seasonal staff members serving the community this summer, we want to share our sincerest thanks for your support of Parks and Recreation in Omaha, and wish everyone a healthy, happy rest of the summer in our City of Omaha parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class C liquor license for Good Life Sports Bar and Grill located at 14110 S Street.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. David Outen on behalf of the High Life Millard LLC doing business as Good Life. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for their Class C liquor license. This location will be located 14110 South Street, or S Street, excuse me, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. If you're familiar with the location, it was formerly in Addys, who was the liquor license holder. The concept, if you're familiar with the Good Life Restaurant and Bars, will be identical to those. They're excited about the prospect. Came to my client's attention that they had a delinquent restaurant tax payment for one of their other locations, and that was remedied earlier today. I do have receipts that reflect that, if any of the council members would like to view it. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Off the Bone located at 6052 Maple Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Please come down.
Hi, I'm Donald Perry. Presenting Off the Bone in the Benson area. Something new to Omaha, it's flavored turkey legs. It's new to me. This is fairly new to me. Family-style restaurant that I'm trying to bring to the Benson area. That's pretty much all I have.
And your address?
6052 Maple Street. It was known as The Flavors, I think it was, Margarita Lounge.
Right next to Benson Theater, right? Good. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Council members, this is in my district, and I would support this application. Motion is second to approve. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Yep, welcome to Benson.
Item eight, to consider a Class C liquor license for Jocelyn Art Museum located at 2200 Dodge Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, good afternoon, council members. I'm Elizabeth Powell, representing Jocelyn Art Museum, and we're reopening later this year, reapplying for a liquor license. We had one previously, as we've been closed for a period of time. So I'm here and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion to approve in a second. I just had one question for you, which is, have you established the date that you're reopening yet?
September 10th.
September 10th, excellent. We look forward to having that happen and seeing all the new additions. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class D liquor license for Wendy's Mart located at 2118 North 24th Street, Suite 100.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Lindsay Schuler. I'm with Croker Huck Law Firm. I represent the applicant. I am at 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite 1200, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Mr. President, council city members. I'm Reverend Dr. Stan Roan, pastor of the Worship Center, 2021 North 24th Street. Rather than make a statement, I'll just read the letter that I have for the sake of time. We, the pastor and members of the Worship Center, located 2021 North 24th Street, and owns a property within 500 feet of the applicant. Wendy's Mart expressed opposition to issues of a Class D liquor license to the applicant. There are currently three businesses established relatively close where alcoholic beverages can be purchased. Amoco Gas Convenience Store at 901 North 24th Street, approximately 10 blocks south, Gas Convenience Store at 2401 North 30th Street, and then we also have the Walgreens Drug Store right at 30th, in 3005 Lake Street. We seek to assist those in community and the surrounding areas who are struggling with varying forms of addiction, including alcoholism. Our neighborhood needs a grocery store. However, the addition of another business with the Class D liquor license alone, the North 24th Street corridor, and within 500 feet of our location is not in the best interest of our community and hampers efforts to aid individuals who are struggling with alcohol addiction and their families. It is for these reasons that we respectfully ask you to not approve a Class D liquor license for this applicant.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other opponents today that want to speak?
President and Council, my name is Reverend Alvin McCruel. St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 3912 North 16th Street. First Vice President of the Inter-Denominational Ministerial Alliance. We have a concern that it appears that businesses that keep coming into the North Omaha community always want to get a liquor license, and it's often stated that the reason for that is to be competitive in the business. While we're concerned about the competition of liquor being sold in the North Omaha community, as it is right now, North Omaha is saturated with businesses where alcohol can currently be purchased. So we would certainly plead that you not issue another liquor license to North Omaha because we're concerned about the residents of North Omaha, and it would appear that what we need to look at doing is getting a real grocery store in North Omaha opposed to several little small convenience marts that say that they have to offer liquor in order to stay in business, wherein if you had a real grocery store in the area, they could order a complete line of groceries in order to stay in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Row, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lindsay, could you just come up? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, and while he can respond to questions, I do have comments regarding the concerns that were addressed.
Okay.
If I may state.
Yes.
So, thank you, councilpersons, President. The owner is Omaha Economic Development Corporation of the property. They are renting out the property, and the lease is contingent on obtaining a liquor license. They had a grocery store in this location before, and, you know, while he raised, Reverend did raise concerns about being competitive with a grocery store and wanting to have a liquor license, that is, that is one of the reasons here, is that the former grocery store was not able to make it as a, just a grocery store with food items, and they weren't, they didn't have a liquor or tobacco license. My client, Highwood LLC, owns another convenience store of a very similar nature in Council Bluffs. It has been very successful for many years. One of its components does have a liquor license. And while the opponents raised adding a full grocery store to North Omaha, while that is admirable and advisable, those also have liquor licenses. They sell beer, they sell alcohol, they sell tobacco, and so in this instance, this wouldn't be very different from a Hy-Vee grocery store or the Walgreens. Walgreens, I guess, the contents of the merchandise will be different because it will have fresh fruits and vegetables, frozen fruit foods. They will be able to purchase household purchases, you know, paper products, plates, napkins, all of those types of things, newspapers. So our client does hope to model this business after his very successful one in Council Bluffs, and in order to do that, the liquor license is necessary, and as well as, you know, putting a business into this space. As you all know, North Omaha does experience a food desert. There are, is a very lack of full-blown grocery stores that have fresh produce and things like that, and that is one of the reasons that they want to bring this into the community, to have those offerings for the apartment buildings and things that are around. Our client did have a community meeting and hosted a community meeting on Thursday, March 28th. I do have a flyer for that if you want. We sent that out to all businesses, churches, nonprofit groups via email, and several via mail prior to the meeting, and it was very lacklusterly attended by zero people. So if there was additional concerns, we wish we could have addressed those with the community prior to that and having them come to our community meeting to see the grocery store, to see the offerings that it could, it could have, because it is, you know, I've been there, there is a full functioning fridge, freezer section, there is a full functioning produce section, and it has top-of-the-line security. So as far as amenities to the community, this will be a benefit. And did I answer your questions, or do you have any additional that you would like to address to the applicant?
No, I appreciate those comments. That really helps.
Not a problem.
Can you verify what the hours of the operation are? Are they?
So I believe, Marhawi, 8:00 to 11:00 P.M.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all the questions. Thank, thanks for helping out.
Thank you. Any further questions that I could address?
Thank you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Don't go away.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I got several questions.
Yes, sir.
I am familiar with North 24th Street.
Yep.
I don't recall a grocery store ever being on North 24th Street. This is basically right at 24th and Paul Street, is that correct?
So it is right at, do you, do you know where the, the, what are they called? The boxes, like the, the, the containers, the shipping container buildings are on North 24th? It's right in there. It's one of, it's on the end, and it's on the most south side of the shipping container businesses there. And so it was, Mike, how long was that grocery store in operation? Since 2016? And so how long was the tenant there? Five years. So Mike is with Omaha Community Development Corporation, and he is the, they are the owner of the building, and so they were there 2016 for about five years and went out of business.
Yeah, I don't recall it at all, but...
I do have a picture of the front.
No, we're, no, we're, I may, I mean, it's not as far north as Fair Deal Cafe, though.
It's right next door. It's right next door.
Right next door?
Yes, yeah. It's attached.
Well, that's why I didn't see it, because every time I go by, I'm looking at Fair Deal.
Yeah, if you see, if you see Fair Deal, it's the one just south. It's the door just south to that, and of course it is innocuous because there's no sign, the doors are dark, you know, like, no one's there right now. It's not occupied.
Okay. What percentage of square footage of the space will be dedicated to grocery items?
So...
Like refrigerator sections and freezer sections you talked about?
I'm going to direct you to the picture, I'm going to direct you to the picture right here. Do you see that first window on the left side? I guess, as I look at it, there's a little cutout in the building right there, and that is the only section that is going to be like alcohol items. The rest is going to be grocery items, and that's about 90% of grocery items.
Okay. Reverend, would you please come back up? I have a question for you. Yes, sir, you. Yes, sir, I apologize, I didn't hear your name, but... Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for taking the time to come down today. I appreciate everything you do in the community. The attorney for this organization talked about a community meeting. Were you apprised of the community meeting?
I was not.
You was not, okay. Was the other minister apprised of the community meeting, sir?
Dr. Roan, will you?
He'll have to come up, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you, council member.
I was out of the city at that time. And so, and responding now to this.
But you were, were you aware of the community meeting?
I heard about it, but I was not able to...
But nobody picked up the phone and called you, or sent you a letter or anything? So you were left out of the loop?
No, I got a flyer, I saw a flyer that came by, and that, that was it. I think that was the one dropped in the door at the church, but I was not there, so didn't able to attend the meeting. And I might say, the grocery store that was there and put there was very welcome to the community. My church is right across the street from it, in fact, we patronized the store. We saw the problem was the amount of supply that was available in the store was not there. And also, the way it was, it was, I managed, I think there were times when the store was closed, there were times when supply was not there. There was a drive at one time where we had, they were getting people to come, and they would give them like a $20 coupon to go in and purchase groceries to promote the store. That didn't go very well because the supply was not there, and so that seemed to be the holdup on that particular, from my standpoint, and seeing that from what I've heard that was shared with me and also attending the store. I, and what we're saying, I think what Reverend McCruel is saying, if we have a store that has the volume and the supply for the community, it could be successful in doing that without alcohol. Yeah, so...
Do you, do either one of you have anything else you want to say about this?
No. I know. But I'm happy to answer any question that I can answer.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Schuler, can you come back up?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know, since your clients are here, I think usually one of, one of the biggest problems we have is sometimes when you have the, the little convenience stores, is people will use the stores as like their refrigerator. They'll come in and buy the one can of beer, the airplane shots, and that's when we tend to see, kind of, that's what tends to cause most of the problems. And we ask a lot of the liquor license applicants in areas like this, where we have neighbors that are concerned about the alcohol usage, to keep it from being kind of the neighborhood fridge, so to speak, would your client be willing to agree to limit his alcohol sales to exclude the airplane shots, the single shots and the single cans of beer?
Marhawi.
And I would say the majority of the convenience stores in the area, we do have, we have asked the applicants to have, put that limitation on them.
I do have another client that has a restriction from the city council, but it is high-volume bottles of liquor, and that is just honestly too prohibitive to be helpful for him and his business, because he can't sell anything less than a handle. And so in that sense, you know, I think that that would be too restrictive, but as far as like...
Right, no, I'm just looking for the single shots. Like, I don't, you can't go in and buy the single can of beer and the airplane shots, for lack of a better term.
Councilperson Melton is asking if your business is willing to restrict your liquor license to not have many liquor bottles and single, single cans of beer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilperson Melton, no, that, that would, restriction, he says no. That's what he has, he has several of those, you know, he does have that in his other convenience store in, in Council Bluffs, and he had, it's a, it's a full service, I guess, as far as the liquor license goes.
Okay, so he's, he's not willing to do the same, to have no sales of single containers?
Correct.
So, okay, well, I, I'm going to say because other, the other people with liquor licenses have agreed to that, and I think, by the way, I think it may actually give him an advantage that we haven't necessarily given the other convenience stores. So I'm always looking to compromise because I understand the opponents and I understand their concerns, but I also understand, I want business owners to be successful. I want a business to open here, it's just sitting empty, and it would provide a place and an opportunity for people to get fresh food and produce, which is very well needed. So I'm always looking to try and balance the two, and I think this is a good way to balance, but if your client's not willing to negotiate on that, I just want to, I just want to let you know ahead of time that then I, he won't have my vote.
Okay. And that may be something that he considers in the future, but right now, this lease is contingent upon a full liquor license, and he doesn't believe that based on his experience in his Council Bluff store, that he will be able to operate the size of store with that restriction. And as far as, you know, not only business costs, we all know costs of food and everything have gone up in order to stay competitive in, in sales and be able to pay the rent, you know, having that kind of restriction is prohibitive.
Well, and if I may offer, Ms. Schuler, what you're telling me is if he can't sell single shots and single cans of beer, do you know how much single shots and single cans of beer he's going to have to sell if you're telling me that's what he's going to rely on for his profit margin? That means that he plans, that he plans for this store to be exactly what I was talking about. Then he's planning for his store to literally be the neighborhood refrigerator where you go and buy the single cans, and I can tell you, in my experience, he might have experience over in Council Bluffs, but I can tell you in my experience, sitting on this council for 11, over 11 years.
Yep.
And chairing the law committee, which deals with all the liquor licenses, selling those single shots, you're just inviting trouble. You're inviting the kind of trouble where it ends up in front of this council where we're trying to revoke the liquor license or send it back down to the Liquor Commission to do that. So I guess what I'm suggesting is something that I think actually your client would probably benefit from, but if he's not willing to do that, and that's the kind of business he wants there, that's not the kind of business that the neighbors want there. So I guess I'm always, always there for compromise, but if there's not going to be any compromise, I'm going to say I'm not willing to make an exception, and I think it's disappointing because I do think you could have a balance. You could sell your bottles of wine, you can sell six packs of beer, so you could still make alcohol available, but not have the single shots.
So I guess my, my concern is that my client is being restricted where other community businesses are not, and like large businesses like the Walgreens or like the convenience stores where they do have full liquor licenses, and without any of these restrictions, now we're putting restrictions on a small business that, you know, is, is basically telling the city that what they need for their profit margins, and where the larger businesses are getting that, but smaller businesses cannot. That's a little bit of a concern, you know, as far as misdistribution or misapplication, you know, of the liquor license statutes, and we want even application here. And we want even application here. And if the Walgreens down the street or the convenience store down the street has the full license, and they had the same concerns from community members, and it was passed anyway, you know, I think that that raises a little bit of a concern in this instance. But if, you know, depending on the, the flavor of the board, if you will, you know, it's a, it's a conversation that I could maybe have with my client, and we could hold it over to the next meeting.
I'll give up my time right now. I may want to put my light on again.
Mr. Hug.
I heard you reference Walgreens. And I just want to point out that from what I see, the size of square foot of store we're talking about here is nowhere near the size of square feet of a Walgreens.
It's about half.
I, probably a quarter, and I think that's being generous. But regardless, we all sat here today, and we heard the reverend made a comment that the previous grocery store, in his opinion, did not have an adequate inventory.
That's possible. I don't know you.
The one inventory they didn't have, obviously, was liquor. And I, I can see where, you know, to be competitive in any market, you have to have and offer what your competitors do. Now, I'm familiar with North Omaha. I've been to Chubbs Foods many, many times. I don't recall Chubbs Foods selling the airplane, airplane bottles, as everybody refers to them, the small liquor bottles. I don't recall them selling single cans of beer. They are a large liquor retailer, though.
Mm-hmm.
And you can buy a 12-pack there, you can buy a quart beer. And I, I think that that's a very successful business in North Omaha. And, but I'm going to kind of echo what council member Melton said. Last week, well, the week before last, the city council meeting, we approved two liquor licenses with the restriction for two other convenience parks. And I, I'm not speaking for those individuals, but they appeared to walk out of here very happy. And if you cannot listen to the advice council member Melton gave you, you might walk out of here unhappy today. And I'm just guessing, because I don't know. But I'm going to ask.
It's a conversation that I just haven't had with my client to restrict it. So I think that that, it just requires me to have that conversation on a more full basis.
Well, he could, he's more than welcome to come back up here and make a comment about the restriction.
I'm not sure if he quite understands it.
Okay. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. Well, and I just want to say, this isn't anything new. We've been doing this for over 10 years, and probably more. I'm Councilman Gray, who represented this area before. It was standard for almost every liquor license that came in front of this council. We put the restrictions on, I think, almost every single convenience store. So in all honesty, I think we would be treating your client, or the rest of them unfairly if we were to grant your client this one without restrictions. But I'm going to call up Mr. Wiesen from our law department, if you could come up.
Ryan Wiesen, Deputy City Attorney.
Uh, thank you, Ryan. And Ryan, we've been doing this a long time. In my opinion, based upon what, when we hear from the community, members of the community, this is a sta, to me, this is almost something standard that we've been doing over the years, is restricting those singles, the single shots and single cans of beer has become almost routine. And then also having opponents from the community, and we've heard from them before, so this isn't new. This isn't the first time this has come up here. I would like, I would like the restrictions to be on there. And so is that, do we have enough at this point to deny them if we send it down to the liquor control? Are there any other, I guess, at this point, the way we've, I guess I would say we would have, we're picking winners and losers, if we allow them to keep theirs and not allow others. Because we have established a practice of listening to the community. There's a church within 500 feet, there are community opponents here, and it's nothing new. Many convenience stores in the same area have the same restrictions. So what is your response to that?
Ryan Wiesen, Deputy City Attorney. The Liquor Control Act does enumerate certain factors that the city council, city and as the local governing body, can consider when making a recommendation on whether a liquor license should be issued or denied. One of those things is whether or not the issuance of the license is or will be required by the present or future public convenience and necessity. Now, in making that determination, the act states that you can consider several things. Included in those things are, you know, the existence of citizen protests. Certainly, we've had citizens stand up and provide evidence and testimony in the record today in opposition to it. There also appears to be written documentation that's been submitted to the city council that's opposed to the license. And the council can also consider the existence or absence of other retail licenses within the area and the neighborhood, and whether or not the issuance of this additional license would result in or add to an undue concentration of licenses with similar privileges. And I think we heard from some of the opponents that there are other locations, other premises in the area with liquor licenses. And certainly, I think you are accurate in your assessment that historically, in the past, the council has kept a keen eye on license applications in the North 24th Street area, due to some historical issues and neighborhood opposition that has occurred. And, you know, can I guarantee that that's sufficient basis that would survive a judicial challenge? That's not for me to decide, that's for the council to decide as the members of the local governing body and weighing the pros and cons and whether or not it should recommend the issuance or recommend the denial of this license.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate kind of that, just that refresher on, on what we base some of our denials on. And I, so I guess, in this case, we do have the citizen protests, we do have written documentation that you mentioned, and we do have the existence of many other retail licenses. And by the way, I think this council's been very good at kind of balancing that and measuring it and kind of having those restrictions has kind of been our compromise.
Certainly.
In the area between business owners and the neighbors. And I think we have made that kind of a, that's definitely nothing new, and it's a conversation that we have had multiple times. And in fact, I think there have been some denials, straight-up denials of liquor licenses. I believe even a Family Dollar was one of them in the recent past, so.
I think that's accurate. I think for the Family Dollar, if I am recalling correctly, that was for a beer-only license. And certainly, the restriction of no sales of beer in 32 ounces or less, or no sales of liquor in 35, or 375 milliliters or less, is a pretty standard restriction that license holders consider. And it's probably the first type of restriction that is proposed in order to find some sort of compromise historically from the council.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Uh, thank you. Actually, Lindsay, thanks for standing up, because I think my question's going to be directed at you.
Okay.
But first, procedurally, I'm going to ask the clerk. I, Ms. Schuler suggested or said something, she hasn't had a chance to talk with her client about this. I don't think we have time to lay this over, do we, do we, or do we not, Madam Clerk?
We do not have time to lay it over, because we have a two-week break after this.
Okay. Can you explain what that mean, if, if we don't take an action on it today, that it would still go down to the liquor commission without a recommendation?
That is correct.
If we did nothing today?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so understanding that, I don't know if, maybe in the meantime, you had a chance to talk with your client, but I'll give you the opportunity to respond to that, knowing that you don't have the, the time on your side, if you will, to lay this over.
Um, not a problem. I did have a couple of minutes to talk to my client here. He, he prefers to model this business after his council bluff business, because that is where he has success. And he did mention that there is a convenience store in 24th and coming, just about five blocks up the street, that received a full Class D liquor license about a month ago. So as far as the difference between that business and this business, I'm assuming it's, it's in relatively the same area, same community concerns, yet they received a full liquor license. I do know that there is a, another convenience store off of about 30th and Kansas that has a full liquor license, similar type of area, just a few blocks north. And so with that in respect, and being cognizant that, yes, community members do have concerns. However, we did reach out, we tried. You know, you, we have communications from the reverend that he received, he received our mailing. I do have a list of addresses of other community members that received the mailing. And in addition to these being mailed, there was emails to every other, whoops, I don't know if I can.
Button at the top.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Technologically challenged.
Me too.
Okay. So those were, those were the businesses that received mailing. Those are generally within 300 to 500 feet of the business. In addition to those, I sent emails to all of those businesses, as well as probably about a dozen more that were in the area, and I received zero responses, zero concerns, zero calls, nobody showed up to the meeting. If there were truly concerns, I wish I had had the opportunity to address them at that time, so that maybe we could talk about what the community wants in the business, what the community wants as types of food. And that way, we could reach the community needs. As of right now, you know, nobody has talked to us in person, and we have done everything that we can in order to reach out to people, short of, you know, knocking on the door maybe at, during church service. But my client has a successful business. He knows what it takes to make a successful business. I think it would be a good opportunity for the North Omaha community, right in that area, to offer groceries to the surrounding neighbors, single-family homes, apartment buildings. People want a one-stop shop, and that's what he's willing to provide. And we would request that the liquor license be approved at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing up that list, and I applaud you for, and your client, for taking those measures to reach out to, to the community and the neighbors. You've demonstrated that you have done so. And I agree, it's, that you've heard nothing in opposition until maybe today. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Ryan, this may be a question for you, sir. I hope so, anyway. So what would the mechanics look like if we just went ahead and amended this on our own?
Ryan Wiesen, Deputy City Attorney, you don't actually have the statutory authority to amend it on your own. You are only a recommending body. So you can recommend approval, you can send it back to Lincoln without a recommendation, or you can recommend denial. In past practices historically, if you have had an applicant who has been present before the council and has agreed to make an amendment to their application at this time, it's a voluntary amendment, you couldn't force them to do it. So they have to state on the record that they are seeking to amend their application and should identify or articulate the specific amendment or restriction that's going to be in place. Then the council accepts that by voting to amend the application and then recommending approval thereafter. But you don't have the statutory authority to force them to amend it today.
Okay. In that light, Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
There's a motion to deny in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one.
Thank you for your testimony. Next item.
Item 10, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Sablagata Zapata located at 6515 North 49th Street for fundraisers on July 27th, August 17th, August 31st, September 14th, October 5th, and October 12th, from noon to midnight with music ending at midnight each night.
Public hearing and vote on items tennis today. I think we have the applicants by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in a minute. Okay, try that.
Yes, good afternoon, council. My name is Quezali Piego, and I am the treasurer of Cabalgata Zapata. And I have my father here, who's the president of Cabalgata Zapata.
Okay.
And we are requesting permission for a special designated license for a fundraiser on those dates to extend it from 11 to 12, with music ending at 12 on those, on each event, those dates. And our address is 6515 North 49th Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68152. And we are a Nebraska nonprofit. We were incorporated just September 2023.
Okay, thank you.
But we are open for any questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think we have another proponent by Zoom. We'll try to get you off mute here in a minute, too. There you go, try that.
Hi, my name's Sochi Piego. I am, I am daughter of Armando Piego. I'm also the secretary of Cabalgata Zapata. I'm here to see if there's any questions I may be able to answer for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents in the audience? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Move the approval.
There's a motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Good luck.
Item 11, to consider a Class D liquor license for Marie's at Southern Spoon located at 3927-3929 Ames Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, council. James Overton, 3929 Ames Avenue, representative of Southern Spoon. We're here today to actually ask for a liquor license for our restaurant. Basically, North Omaha is more or less a food desert when it comes to not only service actually environments and/or sit-down restaurants. There is a lack of actual, not only service-oriented restaurants, which would be a full-service restaurant, and actually provide additional jobs and other things to tie the community. That's what we're looking to do. Like I said, literally, we're investing in the community to try to actually see North Omaha grow. Like I said, there are no restaurants in, from 72nd back to midtown, that actually actually have these features of those amenities that we're looking to offer. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
Mr. Overton, if you could come up, please.
Yes.
If you could, I'm sure you're probably aware that there's a, a balance due, if you will, on your restaurant tax. Apparently, you have never paid those since operating the restaurant?
No, that was actually left up to my accountant, and I defer the actual finance department. We will actually get those cleaned up. Like I said, get that taken care of. My accountant actually missed that, all the other businesses that he runs for us. So yes, we will get that taken care of. They may be aware of that yesterday. Like I said, that my accountant had missed that. So we'll definitely get those taken care of, and that paperwork turned in. I spoke with them again today.
Okay. Thank you. I'll ask finance. So actually, Mr. Overton, before you sit down, before I ask finance, you said you became aware of it yesterday?
I came aware of it yesterday. They sent me an email yesterday. My accountant is actually responsible for taking care of those things. That's what we're paying him for.
Well, ultimately, you would be, but.
Understood, understood. Like I said, I take the.
How long have you been in business?
Uh, we've been in business on location about 15 months, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was 2022, is that right?
No, no, it's not 22.
Okay. Thank you. I'll ask finance now.
All right.
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Are you aware of, have you been in communication with the accountant for Mr. Overton?
Uh, my group said that they had, yes, spoken to his accountant sometime today or yesterday. I believe it was today.
Okay, and do we have a plan worked out for payment?
Uh, no, at this point, we don't have any reporting, so we're not yet sure the distance or the amount of time it's been open or the amount that's owed.
Right.
Okay.
But we're looking forward to action resolve, and we have the capacity to take care of this. We'll get a resolve expeditions.
Do you know, does finance, do you have an approximate amount of what we're talking about?
Since we've never seen any reporting, no, we don't.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Roe.
So a question, a question for the clerk. Do we have time for a layover on this application?
We do not, because we have that two-week break.
So we're off on that as well? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Overton, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know you said, you had called our office, I think it was on the 14th of June. If we had questions, and I was out of town last week, so I, sorry, I didn't get the chance to talk to you before today. Just a couple of questions. So there, I believe you were the owner of Rain. Just a couple of questions. So I believe you were the owner of Rain Lounge, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay. And then, and then you sold that? Were you out of that when it became Threes?
Yes.
Okay. And it rained, you had a lot of challenges from time to time with some tab reports and some things with the city. Can you kind of talk about how you, you dealt with those issues that rained at that time?
We actually complied and actually hired off-duty, actually OPD, to actually be our security. Sergeant Finch was actually head of our security at that time. We had those issues and problems. Our main issues and problems that we actually had in that area were actually parking was the actual main thing. Like I said, that we had, and the neighbors didn't care for it. But at this point, like I said, we're not looking to continue that business model. This is a restaurant. This is not a bar. It's not a club. We do not keep bar club hours. We do not play club music. We are a restaurant that's looking to serve cocktails with our meals. Simple.
What are the hours you're looking for, for this?
Typically, our hours, like I said, Saturday, but we wouldn't go past midnight at the latest ever if somebody actually rented out the space. Like I said, but if there was a special event or things like that, like I said, we would like to actually keep our actually 2:00 AM actually only for a special event. It's not a regular thing.
Okay. And I, I appreciate your candor. I know, I believe there's a new owner of Threes now.
Yes.
And, and the law committee and the council, we've dealt with challenges there. And I'm not trying to dig up your past. I appreciate having a conversation with you. Those are the things that, that just, we look at and obviously, this is a restaurant, so and you're not the owner of Threes anymore, so.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. James was going to ask you a similar line of questioning, just because that particular establishment was in my district, and we dealt with it for a long period of time, and it was very challenging, as, as Mr. Bagley noted. I do think what you're talking about here is different. It's, it is a, I think, a rather small restaurant. Your family has owned and operated lots of restaurants. I think.
Multiple.
Do you still have Jim's Rib Haven down the street?
We still own Jim's Rib Haven. We have one here, we have one in Illinois, and they both operate successfully, not only Southern Spoon. We've made large investments in North Omaha and this community for a period of years. Like I said, so we're looking to actually go ahead and actually just keep moving forward with our investments in the community.
Yeah. And this is just down the street from Jim's Rib Haven, right?
Two blocks.
Yeah. And then as pertains to, to Rain Lounge that became Threes, we've had a conversation about that subsequently, too. I think you're still the owner, but you're not the operator, right? Is that how it works?
I'm the owner. I purchased the actual building a few months back. So I actually own the actual facility, but I'm not the operator of that facility.
Yeah. I think by, I think by necessity of that liquor license, you cannot be the operator. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Like I said, of that location, absolutely.
And I will say, although we had some very serious challenges there in previous years, I would say the last six months to a year has been okay. We have, I don't, we haven't had police calls there. We haven't had complaints. In our last discussion we had, we saw each other at North Omaha Council Meeting.
NSCC.
Commercial Council, commercial club meeting.
Commercial club, yes. I was there yesterday. We missed you.
You described to me the plan for that particular facility, which is to transition out of a lounge business anyway into a, I think, a senior care facility in January?
Yes.
Okay. Is that still the, still the plan there?
Yes. We can plan on actually transitioning that actual no liquor license will be there. It'll be a care facility of some type. We've got a couple of actually interested parties, and that's what we're looking to do with the facility. Never was here to actually cause problems, just to provide benefits to the community. That was never my goal. But I will say this, in defense of North Omaha, they don't have any options. The more options, the more you can spread those crowds out. Like I said, instead of letting them congregate at one place, so. And that's the thing. The more options they have, you don't get those large crowds. They don't have any options. They move from place to place. If one place gets shut down, one pops up, and that's how it happens, you know? So we're just trying to provide another option. Like I said, as far as from a restaurant perspective, we are not a bar, we are not a club.
Yeah, what we're talking about today is just a restaurant, right?
Right, just a restaurant, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think most of the questions I had have been answered, but at this point, at least right now, would you be willing to at least state that your hours would end at midnight, just to show that you're not, you're not trying to say I'm a restaurant, but I'm really gonna be a bar?
I don't want to be associated with other entities nearby, if that makes sense. I don't want to be associated as a bar. So if shutting down at midnight for a period of time, like I said, and not holding any special events until after we have for a period of time, I totally agree.
It might just show everybody that has the concerns that are also kind of looking like.
I agree with you 1,000%, because I do not want problems.
Yeah, and I'm not seeing 10:00 PM. I think maybe midnight would show I'm not that late-night bar.
Absolutely.
But midnight, just in case you have a wedding or a party.
Absolutely. No pushback from me whatsoever, because I've made it very clear to my employees, my staff, and other interested parties. We are not, we do not want to be associated with anything native. That's not our goal. Not at all.
I'm going to request, Mr. Weason. Oh, sorry, I was gonna, I was just gonna ask you. No, stand up there. No, you're up there. What would be the proper language to use for an amendment if they agreed to close at midnight as part of their liquor license? Because we've done it at another bar where they have to close at 1:30. But we didn't do it here. I believe that may have happened at the liquor.
Correct. Ryan, Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney. It would likely be sufficient if Mr. Overton would agree on the record to add a condition of, I don't want to say probation, but like temporary, a temporary restriction of the license for a period of six months or 12 months or whatever the council and Mr. Overton would agree to during that initial period of time, that the premises would close and liquor sales would end at midnight or whatever time the council and Mr. Overton agreed on. But as long as the representation was made on the record.
Okay.
I think that would be important.
Okay, thank you. Stay close. Mr. Overton, can I have you come back up? First, would you, it sounds like you're willing to agree to that. And you know what? I really appreciate that, because you're willing to work with the community.
Absolutely.
We like to have a little compromise, and then I think that the, having this, do it for, if, if you would do 12 months, so that'll give you a.
Not a problem.
12-month period of time, and so you're agreeing on the record that you will close at midnight as a.
Absolutely. No pushback from me whatsoever.
Condition of your liquor license and your approval.
Like I said, we will have breakfast items at some point. There is actually not any sit-down breakfast places in North Omaha either. You know, the closest one is Lisa's Radio Cafe. That offer will be made. We've actually sequestered some of the actual cooks from Levonworth Cafe. They actually come work for us.
Great.
Bring that back. So I mean, you'll get those same taste and flavors for a breakfast item, so, yeah. Just throwing that out there.
I, I appreciate that. I, I look forward to that.
Absolutely.
Like a good breakfast.
There you go, that part.
All right, all right. Well, I appreciate that, so I'll let the, the record speak for itself on that condition of Mr. Weason thinks that it was sufficient.
And just a point of clarification, conditions are not an amendment. You can just make it with the original motion, according to your city council.
I can do it with the motion. Okay. And there may be other lights on. I'm just, while we're here, I'm not ignoring the lights. But I'm going to make a motion to approve the liquor license with the condition that for the next 12 months, you agree that you, your hours will be no later than midnight. You'll close by midnight.
Absolutely, if not earlier.
That's my motion.
If not earlier.
Is that a second? Okay. Mr. Hug, is your light on?
Yeah, my light's on.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I love you. I love, I love Jim's.
Thank you. You're appreciated.
Yeah. The only problem I have is you guys close too early for me.
Send us employees. That's the thing. It's hard, can't help nowadays. It really is. It's hard. So that's why we had to close at 6:00 PM. We wanted to extend our hours, and you know, for the record, I mean, we, we scrapped tooth and nail to get that place back and open. Our insurance didn't pay.
Yeah, we'll let you have Jim's stay open until midnight when we come.
But we are on DoorDash now, so that's a plus. Check us out on DoorDash.
I've seen that. Last time I was in the drive-thru.
Yeah, we're on DoorDash now.
But, yeah, there's, there's nothing like picking it up yourself, though.
Thank you, absolutely. That makes you feel good.
I'm a customer. I'm up there often.
I'm sure my family's watching. They're just like over there, they're pulling at their heartstrings right now.
The, the restaurants you're opening up, can you kind of give me a preview of what kind of menu items are going to be on your menu?
Well, we actually have a southern menu. We do a lot of different things. Like I said, I mean, we do the catfish, the pork chops, the cornbread. I mean, but we'll span the gamut sometimes. I mean, my mother, she's really talented, so she actually goes ahead and actually, she can do his homemade Hispanic food. She can actually do Asian cuisine. She can do a lot of different things. So you're going to see a lot of different flavors on that menu. Yeah, so I mean, we've been there now for the past few months and everything, and I mean, the community has actually accepted us wholeheartedly. You know, we're grateful for the support.
Excellent. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
We'll, we'll see you at the drive-thru.
Absolutely.
We don't see you.
Oh, you'll see me, because I bounce back and forth between the businesses. You'll see me. Like I said, I bounce back and forth.
Well, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have, just to clarify the hours issue, what, what are your actual hours through the week going to be?
Right now, our hours currently are from 11:00 AM Wednesday and Thursday till 7:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, and from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. But when we change our hours and we open the other side, the actual dining facility where you actually get a full meal will be open pretty maybe like 9:00 on a Friday and Saturday, but then you'll still be able to get food at 3:00 until about 10:00, maybe 11:00 before we close the kitchen. And then we'll close that down, and like I said, you'll still have to have a cocktail before midnight, and that'd be the shutdown on Saturday and Saturday. And then Sundays, of course, like I said, which typically in North Omaha, you don't find many restaurants open on Sundays. And we believe in that southern tradition of actually making sure that families can actually congregate and get together for, you know, meals and different things like that on Sunday, so. And then too, we'll add the additional days as we see fit, as far as our timeframe is concerned. We're looking to be a seven-day a week operation. Right now, we're at five.
Okay. I mean, I, I do have some concerns about no, no reporting on the sales tax issue, which I think that's something you have to.
I totally understand that, and we'll have that resolved in the next week. Within the next week, it'll all be resolved. We'll meet with the actual finance department, and we'll get everything resolved. Absolutely.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming that you do a pretty large carryout business?
Typically, I mean, our dining facility, our occupancy license on the one side that we have open now is actually for 17 individuals. But when we open our other side, that's actually going to have the actual sit-down area. It'll actually accommodate another 75. So right now, like I said, I mean, we do do a lot of carryout also, yeah. And we're all on DoorDash at Southern Spoon and Grubhub.
Okay, that was, thanks for that answer, because, I mean, I've driven by there, and it looked like a very small space. I know that you're expanding to the bay.
Right.
Adjacent, but it looked to me, I, I was having a hard time getting it clear in my mind that this wasn't just a bar with food.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is an actual restaurant. I mean, we've got a full menu. I mean, the greens, the yams, the macaroni and cheese, the chicken, the catfish. We've got a full menu.
And I think I get that now, as you explained the hours. I mean, that helped, because I was having a hard time understanding midnight, 2:00 AM, and those kind of hours didn't make sense to me.
And I mean, we, we're not even looking to fill that late-night space, which Omaha has a lack thereof. I think there's only one 24-hour restaurant in the city now, maybe two in the city, entire city. It's, it's, it's pretty bleak. But even if we do decide to fill that space, it won't be in that space that we're in now. Like I said, so we may go west, we may go south, we may go somewhere else, but we're looking at probably filling that space somewhere in the city also. So we're looking to make some significant investments in the city. Yeah.
That's all I have. Okay. Mr. Harding.
Two questions. One, does the liquor license cover this additional space that was just mentioned?
Yes, both street addresses should be.
Okay, all right, thanks. I just wanted to make, make sure we're clear on that. Mr. Overton, is, is your accountant that's responsible for, for paying the occupation tax for Marie's at Southern Spoon, the same one that you employ for Jim's?
Is the same one I employ for Jim's? No.
No?
We've got a different accountant for that. Like I said, literally, I just actually brought him on. I got a different accountant.
Okay, because, you know, Jim's has been in the rears, in arrears for those payments as well, too. As a matter of fact, I think we, we had to turn that over to a collection agency.
Well, I can't speak for them, because that's my family. But now that you brought it to my attention, I'll definitely make sure that we address it on that end also. Like I said, literally.
I don't, I don't like the pattern.
Well, I mean, I can't speak for my family. I can speak for myself on my side, but like I said, we are family, and we do run, operate businesses. And I'll definitely make sure that we actually get that addressed and taken care of. Now that it's been brought to my attention that both of them, because they make sure, they're 77 and 67 now, to be honest with you. If it hadn't have been for my interaction and making sure that we actually did what we had to do to get the doors back open on 38th and Ames at Jim's Rib Haven, there would be no Rib Haven at this point, because we didn't get paid out. We put $150,000 cash out of our pockets to get that place back up and running. And our insurance did not pay because they swore, but now we had a sprinkler system, and we never told them we did. So all of the money that we actually had didn't done, but that's not an excuse.
You know, I, I don't know the, the whole story of that, or don't remember the whole story of that, but you were, and I understand that's a different LLC or probably different corporate organization than what you're doing here. But that's, I wanted to ask what the, if it was the same accountant, because if it is the same accountant.
Right, there's an issue.
We're not gonna.
Yeah, there's an issue. I agree.
But, but it, it still is concerning to me that the accountant that you're using for this, for Marie's, is, is as far behind as, since day one.
I got it. And I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, thank you. All right.
Okay. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. One follow-up with you, Mr. Overton. I, I do appreciate you coming down and answering our questions. And you're starting a small business on 40th and Ames with great intentions here, and I wish you the best. I really do.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to, you know, in the past, what happened, the challenges, whatever those were. This is a new business, and I am going to support this, and.
Thank you.
Councilmember Melton did a good job of, you were on the record with midnight for a year. You're good with that.
We want no issues.
I had lunch already today, but I'm hungry and just listening to your menu.
Stop it.
I wish you the best, and I'll, I'll support this. But again, I appreciate you coming down.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't want to hold anybody's feet to the fire if there are challenges in the past. This is going forward here today, and it, it appears to me in talking to colleagues and others and listening to you today that it is a different venue. You're going to cater to people right in that community that really don't have a good place to go eat some good food. I can relate to what you said about the challenges of hiring employees. That, that's across the board in every industry, especially the restaurant industry. So I wish you the best today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion, a second, to approve with understanding that the hours are restricted until midnight? Roll call.
Roe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to two.
Thanks.
Thank you. Love to see you guys soon.
Items 12 through 16 can be considered together for Brookstone Meadows Replant III, located southeast of 2024th and Harney Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R7 District to R7 District. Item 13, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 14, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the PUR overlay district. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 12 through 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Don Heine with Thompson, Greason, Dorner, 1036 Old Mill Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant, veteran senior living. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion, a second, to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at 3719 Farnum Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Jay Lund, 3335 Farnum Street, the developer of the project. Have a quick little rendering here as a refresher. This is in Blackstone. This is in Blackstone. And the building is topped out as of about a month or so ago. This is a joint venture project between City of Omaha Parking Department, and it's a mixed-use project. 162 apartments on top, 365 stall, public parking garage, and about 18,000 square feet of a commercial retail space. This is, while we're here in front of you today, is, was some materiality changes across the building. And so we went back through the PUR process and Planning Department and the Planning Board. So here for questions, and have Eric Westman from Alley Pointer Makedo as well.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Eric Westman, Alley Pointer Makedo Architecture, architect on the project, 1516 Coming Street, and here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Lund, question for you. Good afternoon. I, I did notice that you're, as you said, it's, you're completed going up, right? So that's as high as it's going to get?
Yes, yep, finally.
Progress, I, I keep an eye on that over the last 18 months or so. So when, when do you think you'll be done?
So, yeah, it's a nine-story. So, yeah, it's a nine story building, pretty impressive kind of change to the landscape there. The, I think the building is actually going to be done in two parts. We're hoping to turn the public parking garage over to Park Omaha for usage here in kind of October, November timeframe. So excited to get that up and running. Then I think the rest of the building, the apartments and the retail will open in February, March.
Okay, thanks for that.
Long, long time coming.
When you said parking stalls, that's music to the ears of the people in Blackstone.
We've had, been having the conversation for a long time, yeah.
I, I'm, I'm really pleased with the progress you're making up there and driving through there and then traffic slows down a little through there, which isn't a bad thing.
Yep.
With all the work going on, but really good, good progress you're making. I look forward to getting those parking stalls up in the spring when it gets, start moving people in.
In the fall, hopefully, the parking, yeah.
Alright, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is that, Mr. R? Motion in a second, Mr. R.
One question.
Yes.
You, you changed the facade just in the parking area, right?
Yep.
So how did, how is it actually going to be handled for the ventilation? How, how is that going to work and what's that going to look like? I can't really tell by the picture. On the diagram that the architect provided, I'm, I'm just not real clear.
So the, the technical or non-technical word we're kind of using it are these fins. So they're twelve foot deep fins separated by exactly twenty-four inches. So there was, there was a magic to the, to the ratio there per Planning Department recommendation and whatnot. So. So the fins, as you, you know, transgress the building, especially sort of east to west, will block the, the majority of, of the parking stalls. So it still allows for, for airflow, proper airflow, but, but also sort of doubles as screening.
Okay.
If that answers, yep.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks.
Item eighteen, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at five one two one North, one hundred and thirty-second Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Dustin Shropshire, seven five two five North, one hundred and first Street. I'm with RW Engineering and Surveying, the civil engineer on the project, here to represent the owner. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item nineteen, in ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at seven three zero zero Greasland Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Mike Holton with Airheart Griffin and Associates, three five five two Farnum Street. Here on behalf of the applicant Colin, who's here with me today to answer any questions you may have. I'd like to thank the Planning Department for all their help so far on this project. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you. Thanks.
Items twenty and twenty-one can be considered together for property located at four three five eight Dodge Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty, in ordinance to rezone this property from GC District in R seven District to CC District. Item twenty-one, in ordinance to rescind the PK overlay district.
Public hearing and vote on items twenty and twenty-one are today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Laurie, we'll get you off mute here in a second. Alright, try that.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Steve Laurie. I'm representing the project with Gensler. We are the architects associated with the project. My address is twelve sixty-five Griswold, Detroit, Michigan, four eight two two six. So I am a proponent. Thank you for allowing me to call in. I don't have anything else to add at this time, but I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents in the audience today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a broadcasting tower in the CC District with a waiver to section fifty-five dash three six six height located at one four two one zero Arbor Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Andy Bobritsky. My address is seven ten Matthew Street, Armor, South Dakota. I'm here to represent American Towers. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow automotive rentals in the CC District located at three four three four South Eighty-fourth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-three is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Kyle Hawsey with E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Millville Road, representing the applicant. Looking for approval of the special use permit for automobile rental. It's not your traditional automotive rental. It is actually VIP limousines. So it's renting limousines and buses and such. So I'll make myself available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item twenty-four, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow indoor entertainment in the GI District located at four three eight three Nicholas Street, unit two oh four. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-four is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Daniel Walk, Executive Director of the Shelter Belt Theater. My address is four eight three five California Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
My name is Katie Cameron. I live at eight one three four South Sixty-Ninth Street in La Vista, Nebraska, and I am the Secretary for the Shelter Belt Theater.
Thank you. Other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed? There's a motion in a second to approve. I'll just say I'm really happy to see the Shelter Belt reopen. I believe this is the old Omar Building, right?
Yes, we're excited.
Great space. Will you be doing Shelter Skelter still? That's my big question.
We will.
We will.
One of my wife's favorite productions around the Halloween time. So we look forward to it. Good luck. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks.
Item twenty-five, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow general retail sales in the GI District located at four three five six South Eighty-seventh Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. My members of the city council. My name is Timothy Nelson, owner of Something Different LLC doing business as Omaha Precision Supply at forty-three fifty-six South Eighty-seventh Street, six eight one one two. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty-six through thirty were held on June eleventh. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items thirty-one through forty-nine are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items thirty-one through forty-nine. And we do have representatives on number thirty-one and thirty-two by Zoom if needed by council members.
Hurry. Alicia Christensen for Together at eight one two South Twenty-Fourth Street. And I just wanted to thank the city council and the planning department and the city for all the time and effort put into the consolidated plan and the ESG funds, CBDG funds and home funds that are in item number forty-five. So thank you for all of your work putting that together and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, is there a motion? Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty, in ordinance to approve an amended real estate purchase and sale agreement with Enterprise Industrial Park LLC for the transfer and sale of a portion of the property commonly known as fourteen ten Locust Street is amendment of the whole requested by the law department.
The vote on item number fifty is today. I will note amendment of the whole for the council. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-one, a resolution to accept the grant award from the Mammal Family Foundation in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The public hearing and vote on number fifty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmembers, I would just note, these next two items are a project that has actually a public meeting tonight if anyone's interested in attending. Seven o'clock at Harrison Elementary School. This is the North Saddle Creek Neighborhood Business District renovation project. Estimated about a five point eight million dollar project. We're in the final design aspect of this project now tonight and hope to have this bid later this year for construction in the spring of two thousand twenty-three. It's a project that's been approved by the city both in our budgets and in our capital improvement plans and has about two and a half million dollars worth of city funding dedicated. We also have some great philanthropic partners, including, in addition to the business improvement district there, represented about two and a half million dollars so far, and that's what these two grants do. They would, these, these two actions today would accept these grants to this project so we can help fund it and get it completed in two thousand twenty-five. With that, I'll take a motion.
Move the approval.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-two, a resolution to accept the grant award from the Sherwood Foundation in the amount of two million dollars.
Public hearing and vote on number fifty-two is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Move the approval.
Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Items fifty-three through fifty-six can be considered together for appointments to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank.
Public hearings on items fifty-three through fifty-six are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings are closed. Mr. Bagley?
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I'll make a, a second to Mr. Hug on the motion to approve these candidates. I just wanted to comment, Mr. Bonner, he was nominated previously by the mayor and there was an issue, I think, with his, where he, his business was in his residency. But I, I'm glad to support him and I corresponded with the email to remind him that in nineteen eighty-eight, his dear late mother June was my supervisor in the mailroom at Lutheran Hospital. And she made the best Kentucky fried chicken from Mississippi that I ever had in my life. So I know he comes from good stock and he'll do a good job on the, on the land bank board. So I'll look forward to supporting these. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Hardy?
This will be kind of an odd request, but I know the, the, these applicants, I, I was hoping we'd actually take these one by one. But in, I know we're trying to make up a little time maybe, but I know all these applicants were asked by one of the council members who's not here today to appear today. And I just wondered how many of them were, were here today. I, I spoke with each and every one of these individuals and went through their resumes. Their, their phone numbers are readily available. You can ask any questions. They were very willing to answer all of them. But I apologize if, if you came down here today and were expecting to have some questions from, from some of the council and took the time off to do that, but are, are not receiving that. So. Here's one, please.
Good afternoon, city council members. I'm Grace Danielle Quasi, non-voting member for the land bank.
Grace, thank you. And I know you and I had a, a conversation and I, I think you're fluent in French too.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Not that that's a requirement for the position, but very, very happy you're here today. And I appreciate you taking my call and, and answering the questions I had. So I look forward. Glad to see that your involvement in this volunteer, non-paid, non-voting position. But hopefully it'll be educational for you and, and you'll be able to add your talents to it. And then take, you know, do further public service for the city. I look forward to that. Thanks, Grace.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
I'll just, if, if there are any others that are here today, I guess not, but thank you, Grace, for being here.
Okay, thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion in a second to approve items fifty-three through fifty-six. Roll call.
Row.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item fifty-seven, in ordinance to acquire private property for the Omaha Streetcar Project is communication and opposition.
The public hearing on number fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item fifty-eight, in ordinance vacating the east-west alley between Hickory Street and William Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number fifty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
How you doing? Alfie Casio, sixteen twenty South Ten Street, Casio Steakhouse.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item fifty-nine, in ordinance to approve the Community Innovation Campus Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number fifty-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Oh yeah, Don Seaton, City Planning, just here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Michael Maroni, President of Omaha Economic Development Corporation, twenty-two twenty-one North Twenty-Fourth Street. And I'm here to answer any questions as the owner and developer of the project.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item sixty, in ordinance to approve an amendment to the Police Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement by adding specialty pay for certain captain positions. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number sixty is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item sixty-one, in ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquids storage district, number B dash two two one, located at six seven three zero Winning Hof Road.
Public hearing on number sixty-one is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Item sixty-two, in ordinance to annex area located southeast of one hundred and eightieth and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number sixty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Derek Miller with the Planning Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed?
Non-action items. Item sixty-three through eighty-two do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public.